Okay, I'll call to order the select -- order selectmen meeting for September 21st, 2015 at the John Bauer Senior Center. I'm gonna start things off with a last-minute request I received today. Chief DeRozier is asking to rec -- that we appoint Nicholas Indexler as a part-time dispatcher. He's been a member of the Paxton Fire Department since 2012, and the chief believes that he will be an asset to the team. Normally, we don't like to do things like this, but we need -- we need him to start his schedule right away, so this is an emergency, so if I can have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
That is done. Now, we can move on to the main reason we're here. And Mr. Malone has asked that he be allowed to kick things off, so...
Well, for years now, I have been sitting and listening to people on both sides say what we have to cut. And the culmination of an hour, two and a half hours of sitting at the school committee last meeting they had, and I heard nothing but bashing of towns, bashing of people, and what we have to cut and what they're not gonna cut, and saying that Paxton has got the money but doesn't spend it, and Rutland has no right doing what they did with the override, they should've passed the override, and also some people saying, one representative whose town will remain nameless, that Paxton doesn't know how to do their evaluations, and it just -- it was awful to listen to this again and again and again. So what I have done is I have come up with something that one of the members of Richard's Finance Committee said the other day quite a while back. "We, as a town, and we as a -- as a school, do not have a problem with spending. We have a problem with revenue. We can't get enough revenue to support both the town and the school." So I did some digging, and if you'll give me -- if you'll be kind, I'm gonna pass some things out, and I'm gonna show some people, maybe take one and pass it along, please. If it's something you already know, then you can fall asleep and have a good nap. I found it to be interesting. Maybe you will.
I think they're different.
This is all different. There's a whole packet.
Oh, okay.
Six in each.
Yeah.
Six in each.
Five different towns.
Different towns.
Okay.
What you're gonna be looking at is the recap sheet, and every year, these are done. You can go online, and it's gonna be seen by everybody else's. You can see your recap sheet of how much money, where you get your money from, and this, that, and the other thing.
This is all Sterling.
Did you get a hold of them?
Holden's first.
Oh, I've got all Rutland.
Do ya? You have to take one and pass it along.
They're just not, um, they're not related.
Also, take one of each.
So take one of Princeton. So Sterling, Princeton, Rutland.
Every town has a packet of four or five sheets.
Okay. Sterling, Princeton, Rutland, got it.
I brought Holden. Uh, Holden, that's all.
We'll save Paxton for last.
So there's Rutland.
I'll pull out your Rutland sheet. If you don't have a sheet, I'll give you it on the...
It's a Sterling.
Sorry.
It's Rutland.
Rutland?
Princeton. I need Holden.
Holden was the first one.
I've holded that Rutland.
I must've passed that right along.
I need Holden, Sterling, and Princeton. Other than that, I'm all set.
You're just not weak.
(laughing). Do we have Paxton?
Yeah. If you can scan up from you.
Holden.
Turn the mic toward you a little.
Princeton.
Princeton.
Holden.
Holden.
And we're good? You're good?
I don't know if I'm good, but I have all I'm supposed to have.
You're good, Peter.
We're good.
You turn to the Rutland sheet. We'll start with Rutland.
Start with Rutland.
No Paxton?
No Paxton?
I have more extra Paxton.
I don't have a Paxton. I don't think anyone has Paxton. You haven't passed that out yet, have you?
Oh, we can pass it out at the end.
Yeah, we can pass it out at the end. There you go.
We know Paxton.
Saving that for last.
What these are is, like I said, the recap sheet of revenues. These go into the depart -- into the state and are verified. And if you look at the Rutland sheet, top sheet, the levy percentage is 94.7 percent, meaning that it's residential. 94.7 percent of their taxes come from residential. I'll make it quick and easy. That's their levy that they're looking for, for monies created by taxes. Now, if you turn to the third page, number four on the third page, payment in lieu of taxes, you see a number of $525,860.01. That is delivered to Rutland every year, shall not be less, usually averages 600 -- 6 percent more each year. As far back as I've been able to go, it's been at least into the '90s that they've been getting a check. And what that is, is for -- from the DCR. And if you ask or call up at the assessors of some of the towns, they don't really know where they're getting the money from or what the money is for.
So Rutland's got over half a million dollars coming in, and they don't know from where?
Right.
Okay.
Now, if you take that half a million dollars, which it says zero other, that whole number is from the DCR for watershed and land around watersheds and this, that, and the other thing. If you -- that is the plus to their tax levy. That is something that they -- they just get from the DCR. So if you -- what I did was go to the assessor and ask for some calculations, and if you calculate out, if they did not get that number from the DCR, their tax rate this year would be $18.37 per thousand, not 17.65. And if they hadn't been getting it for at least five to 10 years, if they had been not putting it into the tax levy, their rate would be better than ours. They would be up in the twenties. So them saying that we don't give what we're supposed to give, and there's not enough money, and this, that, and the other thing, this is one town that has a half a million dollars coming in that they don't get from their tax levy, but yet... And if it was -- we'll get to Paxton after. Any questions? Would you go through your Holden sheet, please? The statement was made at the last school committee meeting that Paxton does not know how to evaluate their properties. Well, I'm sure that if you said that to our assessor, she'd get quite upset.
Mr. Malone, I know that you're reluctant to, but I am curious as to who made that statement.
I'm not gonna say.
Okay, I'll find out. Thank you.
If you look at the residential tax levy again, 93.4 percent, 54 percent, pretty close to what Rutland won, which was 94.7. So their tax levy, taking it out of their property taxes, is basically the same as what Rutland is. If you turn to page number three again, I've already gone over where it comes from. Page three or four. I didn't staple it correctly. Rutland in pay in lieu -- payments in lieu of taxes, $1,026,433. They get that also from the DCR, plus 106,817 comes from other sources. If you were to take away that $1,026,433, their tax rate would be $18.60. Again, going back four, five, six, seven years, at 6 percent more every year, their tax levy would be the same as our -- their tax rate would be the same as ours, if not more. So to say Paxton isn't giving their fair share is not correct. It would be interesting to ask, prior to this being out in the public, but it would be interesting to ask the selectmen of the other towns if they know where their pilot comes from. Holden, we just did it. An extra Holden sheet. Princeton. Everybody set with Princeton?
Yep.
Levy percentage, 95.7, still around the same as the past two that I just spoke about. If you go to page three or four, look under payment in lieu of taxes, $319,567.01, of which $255,315 comes from DCR. Again, if you go and put that in the front, their tax rate right now is 17.30. If you did the calculations out, it should be 17.88. There's a trend here that everybody's going up if they don't have the DCR money.
Do we know why their DCR estimates for 2015 are lower than 2014?
Well, that's odd, yeah.
Yeah, it actually went down 14,000, plus almost 15.
Maybe they got rid of some land.
There is so much stuff to read on the net on this thing. It's just gets boggling who's supposed to do what with what. Thank you for hearing me. Our friends in Sterling. If you look at their levy percentage, 86 percent, they're 10 -- about 10 percent less than what everybody, all the other four towns are for residential taxes, being going into their... Because everybody keep -- the point I'm trying to make on that is everybody says it's industry, it's industry, it's industry, it's industry. It's not industry, it's the DCR. If you were to go to -- this is a real good one. Go to page three or four. Princeton gets, for the little town that it is, $712,394.01.
Sterling.
Of which 4,000 -- $4,571 comes from other sources.
Sterling, right?
Sterling.
Yeah, it's went down, too.
So if you do the calculations out, their tax rate should be 75 cents more than what it is, or 18.04, just this year. The last one being Paxton.
You can pass that one out.
Oh.
Mr. Fenton?
Yep.
94.4 percent, generally in the same ballpark as the other three, not counting Sterling. We're at $20.79 for our tax rate. In Paxton's case, if you turn to page three or four, we get $12,733 for payment in lieu of taxes. Now, if you look at what -- where Rutland's payment in lieu of taxes comes from, it's from Pine Hill Reservoir. If you look at the maps on Pine Hill, and you do some searching, and Carol's done some, and Kathy's done some for me, it's a little different of why you should get paid for it. Some say because if you own the land, some statements say if you -- if the land is in the confines of the town, they should be getting the money. We're gonna pursue where the money comes from. I've talked to State Representative Ferguson, and she's looking into it. But for tonight's conversation, we get $12,773 for payment in lieu of taxes. That, if we were to get what, let's say, uh, Princeton gets, which is smaller than we are, which would be about the -- I'm making a huge assumption, but get what Princeton gets, which would be $255,315, our tax rate would go down 58 cents per thousand. And if we had been getting this right along, our tax rate would be nowhere near what it is now. So coming back to my initial statement, I don't think we have a -- you always have a problem with spending. You can always do cuts, reasonable cuts, but I don't think that Paxton has a problem with spending. Paxton has a problem with revenue. We do everything we can to give every piece of -- every dime that we can do. We don't have very much free cash. We don't have very much stabilization. We don't have very much depreciation in comparison to the four towns I just spoke about, but we also don't get any pilot. If you, again, were to look at where we would be if we had been getting monies, just say for an average of the last 10 years, at 6 percent more per year, and we would end up at $250,000, than we would be have been getting... So if we started at $100,000, 6 percent more, 6 percent more, 6 percent more, 6 percent The town of Oakham, which is not in our district, just got their letter stating that the DCR would be sending them their money. All they had to do was fill out their application, and it would be coming. And give me a moment.
1:28.
I hope I brought it. "The Board of Selectmen, this was written April 13th, 2015, to the town of Oakham. I am writing to inform you that fiscal year 2015 payments being made to the town of Oakham under the Department of Conservation and Recreation Office Watershed Management Payments in Lieu of Taxes Program. This payment is being made in accordance with Mass. General Law such and such, such and such, which requires the payment in lieu of taxes to municipalities that have lands within their borders that are owned by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and are held by the DCR Offices of Watershed Management for the purpose of water supply and protection and resources. The payments made under these programs are district from other pilot obligations from the -- for the state-owned lands and approved -- that are appropriated by the legislation paid through the state to communities on the cherry sheets. DCR Watershed Mileage Management Pilot Program is funded in full by the Massachusetts Water Resource Authority. Rate payers and payments are made through a specific watershed trust account by the DCR directly to the municipalities." You can read this a little bit more, but on the back, the town of Oakham, which is -- I would not take them down any, they're tiny, received $128,162. Last year, they received $121,417. I'm just pointing this out because I don't feel we have a spending problem. We have a -- we have a revenue problem. And I will be continuing to work with Carol and anybody else, Kathy, to see what we can do to get money in. But for people to say that Paxton isn't giving their fair share, they should look at the pilot that they're getting that's outside the tax rate. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you for all the research and digging that you've done and activating members of our -- of our team here to, yeah, to look at ways that we can alleviate the situation. Do you have any idea or any ideas of how we may be able to attack that and perhaps increase our pilot?
We have to go through the state to get a definition. As you heard me read the thing from Oakham, it says it has to be state-owned. The piece of property that I'm looking at now, now is owned, or, excuse me, if you go to the map, it says City of Worcester. But the City of Worcester only gets $900,000 in the pilot. They don't even get what Holden gets.
Percentage-wise.
So...
Not even total. Holden's over a million.
Well, that's true, yeah.
I think they would be a little bit hesitant to pay us more pilot, but the water should protect -- there has been some discussion a while back in regards to -- from their water department to our water department, which will stay hush-hush right now.
Okay.
But we -- I will -- we will continue to pursue. Again, I've talked to Representative Ferguson. She has the -- all the paperwork that you see in front of you. She's gonna be looking to see what qualifies people for DCR money, and if we qualify for some this year or next year. I have not in on the internet been able to find out a definition of what qualifies you to get it. I, you know, and if it's Worcester land, and Worcester, if they got a $900,000, and Princeton's getting 250,000, I think Worcester's getting a shaft, too. But we'll have to wait and see. But this is not a dead issue as far as I'm concerned, but to put a timeframe on it, I can't. But I don't -- in my time on the water board, in my time on the select board, I don't hear -- remember hearing, maybe you do, Rich, anybody talking... Fred used to talk about pilot, but we were talking about going to Anna Maria.
Anna Maria was entirely...
$15 from them and 20 bucks from somebody else, and I mean, this is a lot more than 15 or 20 dollars. So, any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
No more from me.
Busy doing math over here. I'm just trying to figure out what the percentage... I'd like -- I'd be interested to see for each town what percentage of their revenue is this pilot, just for comparison purposes, that way we're looking at apples to apples. But just an interesting comment.
I think the...
Comment.
I mean, obviously, that's not gonna affect what we're doing right this moment, although the only thing it does do, and I appreciate your effort, Mr. Malone, because the Holden Board obviously took a little shot at us, and they have a committee put together looking at the possibility of, well, looking at their options. Although, having had lunch with one of their select board members, who basically lambasted me for not supporting the budget, according to him, they are looking at what happens if they decide to dissolve that part of the regional agreement, if they decide just to go regionalized through the high school. That's one of the options that they're looking at. And of course, they made it clear in -- and again, I read this in the paper, so if it's not a -- if it's not a correct quote, I apologize, but this is what I read, was that Holden supports education. And then you mentioned there were some school committee members the other night who, again, got on the towns for not passing it and not supporting education. And I think I can speak for everyone at this table. As a matter of fact, I can speak for almost everyone. I'll excuse the reporter from this one. We want to support education. You know, I received -- I've received a bunch of emails, which I -- which is fine. I mean, that's what I signed up for. But, you know, my mom's a Wachusett graduate. I'm a Wachusett graduate. My two kids are Wachusett graduates. I've coached basketball at Wachusett for 30 years, and I currently work at Wachusett taking tickets. I know that Mr. Malone has grandchildren in the Wachusett district. Mrs. Pinjtori has children, child in the district, soon to be children. And I know that Mrs. Rich's children have gone through the Wachusett district, and I know that Mrs. Graff Parsons' children are currently going through the Wachusett district. To sit here and say that we don't care about education is absolutely the most ridiculous thing I've ever, excuse me, heard in my life, because it is absolutely not true. Absolutely not true. And that part of the attack is unfair and unwarranted. If we had the extra money collected from our taxpayers that the Holden Select Board apparently has, because they've made it clear they got plenty of money and they want to give it out, if we could collect excess like that, and then we would be in great shape, and we wouldn't have to worry about it either. The fact of the matter is, we're a town with the highest tax rate in the -- of the five, one of the highest in the state of Massachusetts, and we have a limited amount of money, and we are responsible for everyone, from our students to our seniors. We had two senior citizens sit right here, talk about a neglected group, pleading with us and telling us, "Don't tell -- don't tell the senior citizens there's no money," but asking us and telling us, "Please fix up the building with -- that they use for a senior center." And what was our immediate response? "I'm sorry, we want to, we don't have the money." Couple of years ago, and I know that I beat this drum often, but it wasn't -- it was while I was here, and it wasn't that long ago, when Paxton didn't have 24-hour police coverage. And in this day, at this day and time, that's not right. That's ridiculous. If we can't protect our citizens, then there's no point in educating them. We have to strike a balance. So I just wanna get that out there, that that has to stop, because that's just not right. We do care about education. And at the last town meeting, I had a person, who I consider a friend, very upset with me, because I spoke against Wachusett district budget at that time. I invited that person to have breakfast with me, to sit down with me. Hey, nobody claims that the three of us know it all.
Right.
And Carol works awfully hard. Nobody claims that she knows it all. I'm more than willing to sit down with anybody, go through things, and someone can give me ideas. I mean, I serve the people of Paxton. So if someone from Paxton wants to sit down with me, or Mr. Malone, Mrs. Pinjtori, Mrs. Riches, any one of us, Mr. Fenton as Chair of the Finance Committee, they wanna sit down on this, and we're more than happy to go through with things, and it's very possible we're missing something. I, with the amount of work we put into it, I'm not -- I'd be surprised, but it doesn't mean that it can't happen. I got turned down on that offer. I'm putting that offer out again. I know that Mr. Malone has said the same thing. I'll bet he said it 100 times since I've been on this board. Our books are open. Come on down, take a look. Give us ideas. We'll go through it. But I'll tell you right now, we're not gonna go, at least if I have any say in it, I'm only one of three, but we're not gonna go without 24-hour police coverage. That's just not gonna happen again. That's -- we put some of our police officers in situations, and Mr. Malone, you brought this up to me, because you used to -- you were working there for time. We put our police officers and our chief in situations that were dangerous, and we can't do that again. We just can't do that. So I'm sorry to go on that little rant, but...
No, 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 no.
That piggybacks off of what you just said.
If you had taken all of the monies that are available on pilot, because I'm sick and tired of hearing Sterling saying that Paxton isn't supporting us, why do we have to cut our budget when we want a principal in such and such a school? And Princeton hasn't got the people fixing a tile floor, and if you've got the money, use it.
By the way, I'm sorry, Mr. Malone, I apologize for interrupting, but I wanna make one thing clear. I met with the Board of Selectmen from the town of Princeton. And the town of Princeton's, as we know, their assessment went down.
Mm-hmm.
The Board of Selectmen told me in an open meeting, so it's part of their minutes, or at least it should be if they're taken accurately, they told me that they told their Wachusett School Board Representative, Mr. Imbar, that this budget increasing at the rate it's going is unsustainable. So even Princeton, whose assessment went down because of the funding formula, said that this is not sustainable.
He did say that.
Now, I'm not blaming -- I'm not blaming the people at Wachusett. I'm not gonna play the blame game, because I'm not saying that what they're doing is unreasonable. They know their budget better than me. All I'm saying is that between what's going on with the towns and what's going on with the school, it is unsustainable. For whoever's fault it is, it doesn't matter. The point is, right now, the point is, it can't continue the way it's going. We had a task force in place. The school committee decided to disband the tax force, the task force, for whatever reason. I was never given a reason. It was just, all of a sudden, it's done. And we were about to approach the MMA to work with them and trying to get the funding formula looked at. So all I'm saying, the bottom line is this, and I don't wanna rant, I wanna get back to something constructive here. We're wasting Mr. Fenton's time, and he's only got 26 more minutes.
Oh, I'm enjoying this.
(laughing).
Yeah, but I know...
Because you're saying everything that I'm thinking.
I know you wanna be hominid.
Without my having said it.
So the bottom line is this. Anybody who wants to work with us, we're willing to work with anybody. The attacks are not productive. So now, Mr. Fenton, since I've introduced you sitting here, your thoughts? What have you seen?
Well, I really can't add much to what you've already said, the two eloquent individuals who proceeded to state the case.
Could you just recap for us? I mean, I could do it, because I've got your workbook, but since you put the workbook together, could you recap for us what the new Wachusett assessment does for our deficit?
Well, we have an increase in local revenue. Well, we have an increase in local revenue, uh, and we have an increase in, um, new growth, which helps our deficit. We start, we went into this whole process with about a $245,000 deficit. Uh, the new operating assessment for the Wachusett Regional, uh, which I, uh, which produces a total Wachusett Regional School District assessment of $5,791,410, which is a 7.35% increase above that of last year, uh, proceeded to produce for us a deficit of $149,000. So it has significantly reduced our deficit, together with the increase in local revenue and the increase in lo, in, uh, new growth, which of course increases our levy limit. Uh, but we still have $149,000 deficit, uh, because they reduced their assessment for us, uh, but not significantly, about one-third of what we needed, actually. So, so, uh, I like to point that, that our operating budget has increased only 4.39%, whereas the Wachusett Regional School District budget, uh, assessment, I'm sorry, not budget, has increased 7.35%. So, uh, their, um, their assessment is increasing almost twice what our operating budget has. So, that's where we are right now. We have $149,000 deficit.
And you guys are meeting Wednesday?
Wednesday night.
That'll be fun.
At the meeting at the school, there were 20 out of 22 school board members there. For the two and a half hours I sat there, there was not one of those members, not one, that said anything about, forget about cutting revenue, let's find more revenue. It was a continuous go around the table. They were, there were three scenarios given to them by the, by the superintendent. One at $1.67 million cut, one at $626,000 cut, and one at 425. The 1.7 million wasn't even thought of. I mean, that went around so fast, that they weren't, they decided that they weren't even talk about it, except to say, we're not going to talk about it. Don't even bother bringing it up. The second one, I don't even remember the number being brought up, and the third one, they talked for probably an hour on the line item for the deputy superintendent. By the time 9:30, quarter to 10, a lot came, I'd been here since 7, and they still were talking about the superintendent's line item, about how he needed this man and this person, and I'm not saying he doesn't, I'm not saying he does, but that tells me that we're not too worried about what we're going to do, because the other thing they spent a lot of time talking about was, what happens if the DCR comes in? What control will we lose? How, how much of a control will they have? What will they do? We don't want to have the, the commissioner come in. We don't want to have the commissioner come in. It is what it is. We don't have the money. Every year, we have to cut. Every year, they have to cut. When are we going to come to the rationalization that? We need to come up with a new way. Everybody says we need to come up with a new way. So why don't we look at the levy limit as the, what you take your budget out of, and take the five towns, add up the, which I know this is ridiculous, because nobody will agree with it, add up the pilot, which is extra, I kind of consider extra money, and give it to the school. Pass it out. 10% of what we have for pilot, 44% of what Holden has for pilot. They want to spend more money? Sterling wants to spend more money? Please do. You have it, per these recap sheets. It shows that you're, what your, what your money is. You have it. These recap sheets show what they have for cash on hand, what they have for surplus, what they have for this, that, and anything, if you sit and go through them as much as I have. Sterling, Holden, Rutland, if they have some things coming up in the next couple of years. Princeton has some money, but they haven't been putting any infrastructure in. Use it the way you intend us to be used. You complain that we're not have, that Paxton is not spending enough money? I'm tired of it. And what you just said, Mr. Bogren, they want to, the next time somebody says you don't have enough money, say it to my face while we're looking at the books. Because I'll be more than happy to spend a day, or two, or three, or with our, with our, uh, financial people sitting there showing you any, giving you any answer that we have. Well, our books are wide open. So, it's time that we start looking at other ways of doing it, not just complaining about what we're not going to do.
But right now, um, Carol, what are you, what are you recommending our next course of action be, please?
Well, we, we've got 45 days to vote on the budget that has just been presented to us. If we don't, then we automatically accept it. So obviously, we do want to act on it. And, we've already got a budget in place, but we haven't balanced it because we haven't got the new Wachusett numbers in. So we met on Friday, myself and Mr. Fenton, and we, we, I've got an increase in the new gr, growth, which we've only just found out about, um, 20,000. Based on last year's revenues, we can increase this new, this year's local revenues by 33,000 and be okay. So we've got 55,000 there. So, the only, the amount we've got to find is like, because Fenton said about 149, 147. So, that's going to go through cuts, if we're going to meet the Wachusett's budget. So that's up to the Board of Selectmen to decide whether you want to go ahead and cut, or present another number to Wachusett, or go for an override, or whatever you want to do. But, basically, we need to have a special town meeting within the 45 days.
If, if, if the root, if the root was going to be to make more cuts...
Yes.
That's going to come from our finance committee.
Right.
Our finance committee's got to sit down and... And with, there are a number of places that we've identified that we can decrease expenditures, which we will go ahead and do Wednesday night. Of course, I can't speak for the committee, uh, but I will suggest areas that we can cut.
And, and I'm liaison, so I'll be there Wednesday night as well.
Yeah. Now, but the key is, uh, are we going to support the existing assessment, or are we not going to support the existing assessment? And that's the key.
And well, you know, it's, it's, the hard part about that is, is, in my opinion anyways, and, and this is something that you and I communicated by email about, um, I would like to know all of my information before I go one way or the other. I was, you mentioned that you, you found some areas that perhaps the committee, uh, the finance committee will support in making some potential cuts.
Correct.
So, I'd like to know where those potential cuts are. So I'd like to wait till after Wednesday to make that decision. We can still set our date and open the warrant.
Yeah, because you've got to do that either way.
Right. So I, I think we'll do that. And what was the date you suggested, again?
Well, we can't really open the warrant, but I would throw the date out...
Go ahead.
Uh, the 15th of October.
October 15th, wow.
Yeah.
Moving right along.
Exactly. It's very close. Um, but we are stuck for...
And we're far enough out that we can still...
We can, but it will probably mean that we have to meet again next week to open and close the...
Well, next week's a regular meeting anyway.
Yes.
So we'll plan on that anyways. That's fine. Uh, and then what I'd like to do is be able to sit in on your committee. I'd like to be able to weigh, okay, this is what you guys are recommending, and, and then take a look at whether or not we can go ahead and support this, or if, once again, we, we just can't do it. Um, so, I'll be there Wednesday.
Right.
I'll report back then on Monday to everyone. Um, and in effect, if you can, if you can communicate that to us. I mean, I'll be there, but if you can communicate that to, to Julia and to Jack as well, so they've had a chance to look at it before next Monday. And then next Monday, we can make our final recommendations as to what we suggest.
Okay.
But I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to act on that without you guys meeting first.
Mm-hmm.
I think that's, that's important.
I think we need to see how it would impact our budget before we can determine.
Absolutely, absolutely. And, you know, you should, you should never make a decision without knowing all the facts.
Well, the, the thing is, is that we do have to have a fallback, uh, at the special town meeting, because if the school budget is accepted, the school assessment is accepted, we will have to go ahead and cut the budget regardless.
Well...
So...
Yeah, that's...
We, we can't, if, if we don't support the school assessment, we can't assume that the town is not going to support the school assessment.
Okay. True.
Mm-hmm.
True. Um, because, because I have no...
There are too many variables in this whole thing.
And, and, and to be honest, I think that we've seen enough that to spend the money on an override vote is silly.
I know.
It's not going to happen.
Overrides are...
It's not going to happen. So why spend the money that we don't have?
Right.
So that the townspeople can say, no, haven't you gotten the message? Uh, so I agree. Mr. Malone, I'm sorry.
A question of, of order, so to speak. If we were to say, right now, tonight, that we'll reduce the budget by $1, do we still have to have a special town meeting? Or what do we need to do to...
Yes, yes.
We have to have a special town meeting?
Yes.
But we can support no movement, correct?
If we support that, we, we defeat the, you mean, if we have to defeat the budget? We have to send a message that we've defeated it. We can't just say, there's no movement. I think that's you saying the same thing, that you don't want to go any lower.
I don't want, well, if, I don't want to go any lower, but if, what is, we, what do we have to do to send the message that we don't want to go any lower, we're not going to accept, accept your assessment? We go down a dollar, let's say.
Still a special town meeting?
So... So that the people of the town would have to agree to the dollar, or someone off the floor come up with a new number?
Yeah.
But there's, but first, the Wachusett budget number has to be addressed, because the school committee's responsibility is to present us with an assessment.
Which they do.
So we would have to vote that up or down first.
The select board.
No.
No.
Special town meeting.
Then at special town meeting, if that were to get voted down, at that point, a new number could be introduced, but that number has to be addressed first.
But if you, okay, let me ask another question of order. If you were to put the dollar down before the city, before the school committee's number as number one, and then that was accepted, would you have to go to number two?
Yes. We have a legal obligation...
You have to present the number that, that the school...
Yeah, we have a legal obligation to do that.
You always have to do that.
Because it's the school committee's responsibility to present the school number.
Or we can present something else.
After, after the action is taken on the school committee number.
Same ways we did it last...
Same thing as, it's gone on right along.
Yeah.
Okay. So, it was made quite clear at the school committee, that they had to make a number that night, because they had waited till the last day, 45 days, and it's, almost sounded as if that was by plan.
Well, they had, they waited on the ballot question from Rutland the day before.
But I mean, it, they didn't go back to Rutland and say, can you make it a little bit sooner for us, so we can make a difference?
Well, they couldn't. They, they had the town meeting, but they had...
But I'm just saying, even before the town meeting, they knew they were going to, if it, if it had not passed, they were going to have to go to the vote anyways, for the, the way it was written up in the, in the town articles.
No, if the ballot had passed, then the school committee wouldn't have had to act on it.
I'm going back to the town meeting.
The town meeting, it passed subject to a, an override.
Right. Oh, if, yeah, okay.
So it failed, basically, until the, the override vote. So they had that one last day to do, to...
Wow.
That, that was the last day.
It was the other way around, actually. Actually, it passed pending the override vote.
No, because they've got to have a ballot vote to pass it.
Correct. But that's the second part of a two, of a two-part...
You're both saying the same thing.
Yeah, I think we're saying the same thing, but that's how they worded it.[1690.08]